Before we bring up the subject.
You're open to that one? I think you're right.
Yeah, he's still coming. And here in round, they're getting rid of the subject matter slowly. The township communicated with the Wisconsin Townships Association on the subject of making a grant to the ATV club. And the attorney, that she's actually the assistant director now, which she is and has passed the Wisconsin law and it is. And she sort of felt that she doesn't want hardly enough to pay because they're not actually regular in the town. This is where the meeting will be there, there's going to be minds of only these kind of persons who care whether they're legal to bring their town or especially providing way of town because it was appropriate, partly to the town to spend that amount of time, but also the town, which seems reasonable. And she was very good to take the thought base as a guidance. And have you do the senior citizens have a right to live? It's sort of the township could, if you were planning to assume the center. It's like that size. And with that in mind, what I would suggest is that you sit down and write up an agreement with the ATV club and hopefully when you spend money on it. Discussion?
Was, was the money given already?
A few years ago.
Was the money given already?
Yes, it hasn't been spent for a while.
How, how long ago was it given?
On March thirteen, two thousand sixteen. Is that right? If this information on these papers is right, then it's right. I don't know who these came from. We got a letter and it's not signed, but from the Concerned Taxpayers of Nakoma Township. My name should be on there too.
The name is red?
Yeah.
The name should be on there.
But I'm not, since I didn't, I didn't know anything about this.
So is this contract going to be open for bids or it's only for your-
It's not a contract, it's not a bid.
Well, I thought you said it was a contract. No?
No.
Okay.
I didn't say that.
You mean grant?
Oh, grant, okay.
Well, I didn't ask for whether it is.
Okay.
I said agreement, I didn't say the contract.
But I thought it went over as a grant. Am I wrong?
That's how we called it when we passed the May on date.
I mean, there's some people that are saying we're doing it all wrong. I don't know. I was on the board some years back when the Lake Nakoma's Lake District, I mean Lake Nakoma's Concerned Citizen came to us and we did it the same way.
Maybe you didn't do it right back then.
Maybe we didn't, maybe we didn't, but wouldn't you think, well, I don't know.
Well, state of Wisconsin, as part of the state of Wisconsin's constitution, is what's called the public purpose doctrine. And that specifically says that any tax monies have to be used within that taxing district, can't be used outside of the township. And that's kind of what your attorney is referring to.
But Lake Nakoma's, that wouldn't hold true then. And we did it wrong because part of that's come rapidly.
That maybe, and I've discussed that with a few people, that maybe, you may be right on that.
And maybe even historically before that, when the town of Nakoma's gave money towards the library in town law, right? And it was to a grant, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you can give donations to private organizations, but that has to have a public purpose to it. And you can look it up on the internet. There's a lot of case law pertains to the Wisconsin Public Purpose Doctrine.
Well, but-
It's pretty open and has libraries a lot. I told the Congress, we had this in nineteen seventy seven, and now the Supreme Court found most anything that had a public purpose to it. Because they specifically look at things like giving money to Addison tenants who have been a small private group representative, really does have complaints against landlord, so it's not really just renters. And that has to be mastered.
Yeah, I mean, it has to have a public betterment. So, I mean, you know, you certainly can, the township can give a grant or a donation to the Little Leagues Association or some other organization within the township because it does have public purpose, a greater purpose.
The ATV club doesn't have any, uh... We intend to spend any money that's right here in town from the Congress, period. There's opportunities for it.
Well, I think for me, I just wanted to make sure somebody didn't use it for beer money.
Absolutely, yes. And we, we've held this block of money for over a year now. And we intend to have a detailed accounting of every penny. And if we run out of projects, the balance is coming back to town.
And I don't mean to dominate the meeting, but the signage, we always talk about the signage that you're gonna need, if this is for sure, the speed limits are coming down and you're gonna need, so how much is that gonna cost?
I really don't know. Right now, we're working on a project that connects Highway L to Smolke Lake Road. Um, we've already dealt, uh, with property owner, uh, and we reached an agreement on golf and decent through his land. And this trail will be on DNR property. And DNR has a history of regulation of how the trail is developed. But we haven't had an opportunity to walk that to DNR. And they just agreed to this, uh, potential trail last week. So we don't know if there's gonna be a lot of armoring needed, or if the plan is high enough that there isn't any issues with runoff and things like that. So until we roll up our sleeves, we can't project very actively what, uh, what we need. But it's currently developed, it's signed. Uh, DNR might require a parking area. There's a lot of things that go into,
So, so the ATV club is, is okay with the contract about the money being spent on the money?
Absolutely. I have no problem.
But I thought, I remember you say, I know that, that night that the money was given to you in front of the check. You and I both raised our eyebrows thinking, oh, this isn't the way we expected this to work out. And, I mean, I just want to be upfront that it wasn't as if you were saying, give me that money.
Absolutely.
You want to hear the offers. Um, you know, I think we both were thinking, well, what are the exact specific, you know, agreement here? What, what are we doing? And I, I think we did the best you could do at that point. The check was given to you, John, agreed to, um, you know, account for it, um, you had. So here we're, this is where we're at right now. And I don't think that you or the club want to, you know, ruffle the feathers about this. I don't think that it was the purpose of our, again, the club or the township to make people upset about where this is at. I think that we wanted to have an open communication about this, and I don't think that it was anything above that. And I'll be the first to admit it's probably made some errors in legally how this was done, or what exactly was given, when, and things like that. And this is where we're at. It was, we need to take care of it, so.
It seems like this is a CYA. Cover your ass type thing?
I think it was taken care of.
We're kind of going back and trying to do it right because, because, yeah, I mean, we didn't do it right to begin with. So we're trying to make it right now.
I don't have an issue with you guys getting the money. It's, it should be spent here and, and not like beer money or whatever, or, you know.
Well, going back to the original budget for this, when we sat down as the board looking at, um, after the allocated money for the year, the way it was put into the paper is something that was, that this was money that we decided as a township to help support the, the making of that multi-use trail. Now, that apparently has fallen through. And so this is where we're stuck. And, and again, in hindsight, would that have been good to get down, you know, in writing and know what to do in that situation? Yes. It wasn't that.
And I was confused as to when it was given because your meeting minutes said it was given in twenty thirteen.
I mean, I'm not opposed to what the, the town plans to do. It's just that they need to do it right. They need to do it legally. And that wasn't done to begin with.
And according to the January fifth email that Carolyn Baraki from the Wisconsin Towns Association sent, and I'll read it in its entirety, the town can certainly authorize construction of a trail around on town on land. It is less clear the town can give a private club money to build a trail on land that the town does on own. What is the public purpose in that case? The town will not have any ownership of this trail. It's hard to justify this as a benefit to the public at large. Offhand, they don't have any specific legal authority that would allow for town tax money to be given to a private club for a trail on state-owned land.
She was shooting out from the head at that time, not referring to the law. She replied in much clearer way than I'm-
She still says no, John.
That's your interpretation.
Would you like me to read that one too?
You can read it however you want to, if you're ready to not, however you just digest it further and tell it. When you pass the bar, they will ask you to give your questions and tell them or not.
And I can say the same to you then, John.
I don't think you still about this, that it's appropriate time.
You've been told no except for emails.
That's your interpretation.
And I think if the money was originally given for a multi-purpose trail and that purpose doesn't exist anymore, then the money needs to be given back.
That's your impression. And that suggests if the board approves, we sit down with the top and write up an agreement on how to spend the money that we have given them. Comments by the board?
I don't want to give the town any more trouble than it looks like it is, that we are, or what do you think, Wayne?
I don't know. I, I, you know, I still go back to where this originated from. And when we sat down as a, as a board looking at the budget, it was proposed and we agreed and we made room for ten thousand dollars to be given for the funding of this ATV trail along the county. And as we discussed it, I even called, stated that this may be something that will be reoccurring because the first phase of this would be for ATVs for certain section, and the second phase would build on that. And it was, it was something that was long-term. We were looking at this as being something for the town residents and not just for one particular group. That didn't happen. So now we have to rethink this whole thing. I don't know if it's in the best interest of the ATV club to be sitting on that money with that, with that original premise not there. I, I mean, I don't see a problem with taking that money. We've already budgeted. It's already been given out. It's not like that money, you know, we can take it back and then give it to for a different reason. But what if we would take that money and actually this time, if you're, you know, willing to give it back to us, set up some sort of fund for recreational trails? If something, the plan that you were just talking about sounds great. But I can also see people later saying, well, it was originally, it was supposed to be for L. That's what everybody agreed to. But if we had a fund set aside and we, you know, could then approve to spend the money to, for signage, for construction, parking lots, whatever is needed, um, I don't think any of us were against that. Even that, people I hear opposing the, what, what's, what has happened and what's going on, don't sound like they're disagreeing with that idea of providing recreation and town funding part of it.
I think-
That's my gut feeling.
And I think you bring up a very good point. Um, you know, why is it for one specific sport or one specific, you know, part of recreation? Why are we picking out one group? I mean, there's a lot of people that engage in many different types of recreation here.
And, and I, I remember taking it to the Parks Committee, and I remember talking with many other people and saying that this was multi-use. And that was a big selling point, that this was something that everybody in this township could enjoy regardless of their mold of enjoyment. And so, I mean, to put up signs along L has been, has been discussed or working on just an ATV trail on Woodboro, that doesn't cut it. That's not what was discussed. And I don't think that's what the people in the township want. They, they want to make sure that we can enjoy it better.
Have you made the money that we did discuss, the trail to make to the Woodboro? That's probably what, then we're adjacent to the township of Nakoma's.
But now the ATV club is saying, you're not using, you're not gonna use it to connect to Woodboro. Is that correct?
Probably. We don't know what-
The wheels move so slow on these projects, dealing with the government. Hopefully, we can get some grants for that trail. Uh, there's no guarantee on that. And the grants have to be submitted by April fifteenth of next year. And we won't hear-
This year, right?
Well, no, we're too late.
Okay, so you're actually looking at next year.
We're looking at submitting an application for a grant, uh, to be reviewed in July of two thousand seventeen. So you're talking over a year before we even know if we're getting any money from the ORB council.
And I thought you were talking about this newest development.
No. Well, let me, let me just interject something there. We met with John Billigan, the county forester on Friday, and he, his, his offers also deals with snowmobile ATV trails. You getting on this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Um, and, uh, John said that the trail that we're talking about here, up here, is only a half mile long, give or take. And, uh, the ORB council isn't real favorable to small trails. They're looking for something that's larger.
You, I'm sorry to interrupt. You said the ORB?
Off-road vehicle.
Okay.
Anyway, um, it's pretty much, uh, given that, uh, this trail would have to be funded by the club in one way or the other, if it's part of this grant, or if it's part of the funds that we raised in the other activities.
Can we make up your unkeyed names?
Oh, so.
Talk slower.
John Billigan, B I L, A T O N?
Okay.
O G, the-
Yeah, Billigan.
Okay. All right.
Money for this?
Yeah, I can report on this.
All right.
John.
All right, sorry, I'm a little ahead. Okay, then, then it would, for the off-road vehicles, okay, but would be funded by grants?
Uh, this one probably won't be, where the Cruisers Trail has a potential of it. The thing with the funds available, they're very limited, and they have to be dispersed across the state for all sorts of development and maintenance, bridge building projects. And, um, you have to be kind of lucky to get some or all of the money they're requesting.
And I imagine they're looking for large-
Yeah, they want to be able to say this X amount of miles. They don't want to say,
well, we connected this, this, that.
It needs to connect to the social network.
Yes.
So after, um, I believe it's the May sixteenth, the May sixteenth town meeting for here, that's the one that you put in the paper for the forty-five mile an hour? Am I-
That's on the paper.
Okay.
I heard it in the way it said, it means the-
Here, you put in the paper that little notice about the May sixteenth. That's kind of the next step that we have to go through to be able to get them to go on L as their trail.
No, no, it's not at all.
That is not the deal.
It's approved.
Okay, so it's good. We're, we're, we're doing the L thing, and then now the sixteenth is the miles per hour, right?
Different issue altogether.
Okay.
The, the, what has to happen on L, signs have to be purchased and you have to be put up, but under the county regulation, the signs have to be put up by county authorities. So that's what I understand is put on now. So I don't know who's ordering the signs or who's putting them up, if that's what-
We just saw some, uh, proof, uh, proofs of signage today, and apparently Brandon is ordering signs.
We're ordering, we gotta order.
So we're gonna order.
Any game is that choice. He said, you wanna order, or you want me to order. Well, if we do it, I'm, I'm gonna get done a lot faster. And as soon as they give them, they can put them on.
So I'm just trying to see where, how much further we are along with, and, and then you have this map here.
I have the map.
Is this, is this part of it?
Yes, it is. I was gonna say, it's a few minutes, a mile or two or so. But what that really looks at is the current trail easement for Highway L across the bridge onto Biarara. And that was purchased in two thousand and five for three thousand seven hundred and thirty something dollars. And so we went to the landowner and explored how it would cost to change that to an all-purpose trail that would include ATVs. Our negotiations came up with a price of four thousand five hundred dollars. Because right now, the main use of that trail is about three months long. And it does go through near the middle of his parcel land. He said that he was doing it for his track. He would never let the initial easement. So one proposal for money is that the town of Nakoma's would wind up with the easement, which is currently in the name of the D N R, that is limited to hiking, hiking, and smaller, but, uh, is what the government patients are on that. And so for a price of four thousand five hundred dollars, we could, um, join up with the D N R and the rest of the river.
So that's, the, the township is gonna pay for that? Is that, is that what?
Yes. Well, we would, if we, if the money we gave to the-
You guys, oh, okay.
Snowmobile, but the easement will be in the name of the township.
Okay.
The club could be here a lot, drawn the next day, if that does happen, as is practiced in this, for the-
Who owns the bridge and who are the landowners on the west of the river?
West of the river is the Department of Natural Resources. And as near as I can tell, the county owns the bridge.
And are they gonna allow four-wheelers across the bridge now? Is that a done deal?
Well, again, in our meeting, uh, with the Forest Street Department on Friday, we brought up this subject. And, uh, we have to negotiate with them yet, but they didn't say, you're never gonna use this bridge. It's a very substantial bridge, um, and, uh-
Because isn't that one of the things with the snowmobile clubs that, are the snowmobile clubs okay with, I mean, you know, the same?
Well, I talked to, uh, Steve Moran the other day about this too, and he didn't see the issues.
Does it-
But we haven't sat down with them, okay? There's a lot of things that have to fall into place for this whole project to work.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, is, oh, this is coming along, maybe give it to-
There's no disagreement.
Nobody's raised a red flag yet, but the, 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 the biggest, uh, the big thing we got so far is the agreement for this, uh, easement.
Does the groomers go across that bridge? The groomers?
Oh, yeah, groomers go across.
So it's, it's, it's built, it's heavy?
That's very, very substantial.
Okay.
Yes, at least, probably twenty thousand pounds or better for a vehicle or a-
Well, yeah, those groomers probably weigh more than that. Yeah.
But the bridge was built, was snowmobile trail planned through the D N R. And that's why the D N R found out right away. And the state owns the river, where the bridge is, and they provided the funds for the bridge, but they sort of had it administered by the county. Yet, the original easement was sold, they actually given to the snowmobile club. And then a later easement, that was in nineteen ninety-two, a later easement was sold to the D N R.
So where are you going to go once you get to the other side of the river? I mean, are you planning on connecting to Smolke Lake Road and?
Yes, uh, just a little bit beyond the bridge, or north of it.
There's roads back there, yeah.
There's an existing road there, according to the property, again, our property manager and then property service.
Okay, yeah, I know where, I've been back there before. Okay.
Is that Forest Road?
They're just logging.
Well, yes, just an old logging road.
Two roads, yeah. But see, the potlatch corporation owned the D N R land, and that was partially their road, so the lights went to D N R, the potlatch check. So anyway, the first proposal for any of that money is for four thousand five hundred dollars to purchase more of the here around easement on that right away. And one of the qualifications in easement is that the grantor, meaning the landowner, shall not lease or deviate any other easement in any way affecting the subject property without securing the prior written condition of the grantee. The grantee is D N R. And D N R has written the trail into the master plan for the Tom Hox River Party, the, the rest of our master plan. So anyway, I sent them this morning, asked them, who do we get permission from?
So this master plan, does it designate whether it's gonna be used for snowmobiles, ATVs, or, does it say?
Yes.
What's it say, snowmobiles?
It says, it says ATVs.
Okay.
And it's online.
And I know, yeah, it's just been out for the last couple of weeks, it's not...
Yeah, I've just got it through. So anyway, that's where the first project is right now. But first thing that has to happen is something from the DNR. And if the DNR wants to ease them, guarantee, they'll have to come up with money. So, I suspect it may be very flexible in terms of argument. And I've sent a note to both the property manager and the lights over there, chief over in line, and so that's what happened so far on that. If that gets the ATVs from County L eventually off to Smolak Lake Road, just what that will do. But that one key piece of property is pretty important.
And is that owned, is that owned by Lot Two or Lot Three on this map?
The all lots are owned by the same party.
Oh, okay.
But it is in Lot Two.
Okay.
The current name of the bear skin family is the Bergstock.
So somebody purchased it or just renamed it?
Yeah, I think we purchased it, although I guess it didn't have a mortgage on it, so it's, it's a fee owner, so it doesn't...
I agree, I agree.
So you said the DNR would have to come up with money?
If they want to right away, and there, and right now, they have part of it, and they, and they can use it for snowmobiles, bicycles, and hiking by account.
So who's the individual that you discussed purchasing the easement from?
Bring, uh, Jack.
I don't know his name, he owns the Bergstock, you just do the bear skin up there. I don't know his name.
Jack.
I don't know the name of the person.
There's Jack.
Jack, yeah.
Yeah.
Jack and...
He's quite a very, very, you know, any trouble here and him, I don't think. I was gonna take my hair and his out when I sat next, but I don't think I can speak.
So what you're saying, that goes across their, um...
Yeah, this is a bridge right here.
Right, I, I know where the arch is, but I... So there's the lot's money, forty-five hundred dollars?
Yes, the people that own the bear skin.
That's what I thought too.
And their argument, sir?
Again, their argument was that ten years ago, a part of the right away was sold for three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. And it's kinda hard to argue without, you know. He would have preferred to have gotten more, who made that very plain?
Well, I don't understand why he would want anything, I mean, I don't get that.
He's a business person.
He's a business person.
He's a business person, and he has a bar right there, to me, it's the opposite. I was, I was only born and raised in one, so...
Well, the original owner, some years back, they were giving free right of way to the snowmobile club.
Yeah, I never very well, see, only recently that, uh...
Yeah, but later on, the next one was sold right away, same right away, to the DNR. I don't know if you can track that, I'm not sure.
Just right away, it sort of passed. He was, he did sold. Yeah, so I just don't understand how, if a person sold the right of way to the DNR, how they could sell the same right of way if it's on the counties.
Right.
Different purpose.
Different purpose, yes, indeed.
Apparently, you can sell a right of way for walking or riding, but there's so much I don't know.
This, this time, it'll include horses and lots of other things.